We'll call it order tonight's committee of the whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for February the 21st, 2023. The city council should have the minutes from our committee of the whole from February the 7th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
May for approval.
Second.
If the motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the minutes are carried forth. Questions for tonight's agenda for the city manager? Any questions from the dais for the city manager? Okay. Ms. Crouch, see anything for us?
We don't have anything.
Is there a move to adjourn?
They're moved.
All right, we are adjourned. For our guests in the audience, we'll start right at 6 o'clock. We'll call it order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for February the 21st, 2023. Want to welcome all of our guests that are with us tonight and they're joining us through live stream and through WANI. We're glad to have all of you here. Lindsey with the roll call.
Adams.
Here.
Oblent.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Whitton.
Here.
Here. Normally at this point in time during our meeting, I would ask everybody in the audience to please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Tonight, I would like to make a few comments before we do that. This is the second meeting that the Auburn City Council has conducted since the loss of our planning director. Mr. Steve Foot died a couple of weeks ago, and we continue to be mindful of his loss and continue to pray for his family, and we continue to think about the staff that is picking up and doing the hard work of leading this community through all of its busyness and development. We will certainly miss Steve and thank him for all of his efforts and work on behalf of our community over the last couple of years. So when we do rise tonight and have a moment of silence, I would like to ask you to consider Mr. Foot and his family as well. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We had no, nothing on our agenda tonight during the committee of the whole. We had no discussion, so we'll move forward into announcements. I'd like to recognize a couple of groups that are with us tonight. We have a scout troop that has joined us tonight, and normally we ask each of the scout members to stand up and tell us who you are and what you're studying and where you're from, what your, but if y'all want to do that, elect a leader to do that, you're welcome to do that as well, but we certainly want to recognize you and ask someone to please tell us a little bit about what you're working on.
This is an all-female voice scout troop that's here in Auburn, and they're working on their merit badge for our citizenship in the community.
Good. Well, we're glad to have y'all and hope you learn a lot tonight, and all of us will be available for any questions or comments you might have afterwards, and good luck to you. We also have a number of Auburn University students tonight that are member of, that participate are actually in Dr. Joan Harrell's journalism class. Dr. Harrell's been a great asset to our community and a good friend, and we're welcome, welcome you and all of your students here tonight. They are in a news reporting class, so there'll probably be a lot for you to consider tonight, and we're certainly welcome to have you. And as I mentioned to the scouts afterwards, if you'd like to speak to any of us, if we're available, we certainly don't mind carrying on with you and talking to you about what we do and how we do it, and if there's any follow-up, we'll do that as well. Just a couple of other announcements. Recently, membership from the, from the leaders of Roswell, Georgia came to Auburn, and they were in our area doing a retreat, and they spent some time with the leadership, particularly our public safety leadership, and came by to see this building, understand how we got to where we are with this building and this facility here. I just, again, I think it speaks really well of our community that Roswell, Georgia, a very progressive, well-doing community to the north of Atlanta, thinks what we're doing here in Auburn, Alabama, is pretty good, and they want to study it and learn from us. Without question, we benefit from the fact that their mayor's an Auburn graduate, but we were certainly proud to have them here and enjoyed our time with them, and I appreciate Will and all your staff giving up their time that day to show them around. Recently, we recognized all of our 2022 employees of the month at a luncheon. I appreciate all the leadership of the city putting that together, and I recognize and again the outstanding work of the people that work on behalf of all of our citizens here in Auburn. It was a great, great time together. Auburn Day is coming up, and if you go to either one of the Publix grocery stores or Kroger this weekend, you can pick up a free tree, and we appreciate what our Tree Commission does, working with our public works to support and promote tree planting in our community. And I know Ms. Whitton will speak to this in a minute, but the Mardi Gras parade really went well over the weekend. I commend all the organization and the efforts, the heavy lift really from our public safety to make sure that we were all safe and sound as we watched the parade and had fun that day, but thank you. It was a great day in downtown Auburn. It looked like a lot of our businesses were doing really well. And Mr. Cosgrove, I'm sure, will speak to us a little bit later, but there's a new plaque that will be unveiled soon at Felton Little Park that chronicles the history of Felton Little Park. This has been a project that's been going on now for a while, and it has reached a conclusion, and all we have to do now is pull the tarp off and celebrate its effort and work. But thank you again, Steve, for your passion and care to celebrate the rich history of Auburn's first ever park, Felton Little Park. Does anybody else on the council have an announcement they'd like to make tonight?
Yes, Mayor, if I may. You did allude to the fact that we had a Mardi Gras parade this past Saturday. The Crew de Tigres hosted their sixth annual parade in downtown Auburn, and it was a great success. The sun was shining, and we appreciate all who came out to support the parade, and especially all of the different departments within the city that helped us to have a safe and fun day in Auburn. Downtown merchants reported having a great day as well for their businesses, and today is Fat Tuesday, so happy Mardi Gras, and we look forward to celebrating again this time next year. Also, I don't know if Kelly was going to mention this or not, but we had a work session this past week where we went over some of the points of our boards and commission policy so that the whole council could understand where we are and where we're going, and it was a productive meeting, and just wanted to give an update that we are still working and moving through our boards and commission process.
Anyone else? Anyone? Okay. All right, Auburn University Communications.
Hi, good to see you all again from me being out the last couple of weeks, but it's good to be back up in front of you. So first off, we are continuing with the installation of our new SGA executive cabinet, and they, we got, we had our elections a few weeks ago, and those went really well, and they have selected the other three members of our exec, and they will be officially installed at our SGA banquet this Friday. Mary Anders, I think you'll get to meet our new president at city breakfast this Thursday, so that is all very exciting. Next, Auburn received a record number of applicants for Fall 2023, which is a huge deal. They, we actually topped 48,000 applicants, and that's up 5% from Fall 2022, so that's, we're obviously doing something right, and that's great news. Next, the College of Veterinary Medicine is planning on launching their first undergraduate degree program in public and one health. This is a public health-focused field, which is obviously very relevant in these post-pandemic days, and the first courses for this, assuming everything gets approved, will be launched in 2024, which is right around the corner now, it seems like, so that's very exciting as well. And then lastly, probably most importantly, Tiger Giving Day is tomorrow. Tiger Giving Day is a 24-hour student-led crowdfunding effort where we, you know, raise money from anyone who's willing to donate for projects on campus such as a dedicated group therapy space for our student counseling psychological services center and improvements for wheelchair basketball game days, things like that, so very crucial, very important to our campus. If you have the means, we really encourage you to please give back on this day. It is a wonderful way to give back to Auburn, and that's at tigergiving.org is the website for that, so please, please, if you, if you remember this tomorrow, please go donate. But that's all from me this week, so we're eagle.
We're eagle. We'll see you Thursday morning. Okay, at this time, as Citizens Communications for items on our agenda, this is just on items on our agenda. We'll ask that you come forward and share your name and address for the record. We'll ask you to speak within five minutes, but these are just items on our agenda. There are some items on our agenda tonight that have public hearings attached to those. We'll ask that if you'd like to speak about that particular item, that you wait for the public hearing at that time. Anyone? Okay, we'll move forward with the city manager's communications.
Mayor, the only communications I have this evening are the announcement of two vacancies on the East Alabama Mental Health Board. Terms begin April 1st, 2023, and end March 31st, 2029. The appointments will be made at the March 21st meeting. One vacancy on the Board of Education, that term begins June 1st, 2023, and ends May 31st, 2028. The appointment will be made at the April 18th meeting, and as a reminder, you'll, we open applications now because we have to appoint in April via state law, and you have an interview process, and so that's why we're opening them early. I don't believe that we have announced the, the date for closure of those applications yet, and some of that has to do with when you choose to do interviews.
Sure. We'll get together, city manager here pretty soon, and set those interview dates, certainly working around spring break and obviously the appointment date on April the 18th.
Absolutely.
I would offer the council that we'll probably look for some time in early April to host the interviews. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no problem. Are you ready for the consent agenda?
Please.
All right. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Item eight, Delta two. D two, anyone else? Okay, we'll go with eight. Delta two.
All right, for sure, I'm gonna mispronounce one description of this, but item eight D two authorizes the purchase of 25 Pitagone F-18 mobile HVM barriers from Noble in the amount of $58,056. In English, these are module, modular barriers that'll be utilized for special event road closures, so they're what you saw during the budgeting process. They are a different type of barricade that will wreck a car pretty handily or a big truck trying to enter a parade route.
May for approval.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Mr. Mormon.
That actually was what I was gonna comment on, just a couple of words, because I had this image that they were Jersey barriers, just $2,300 concrete, maybe plastic covered, and that is not what it is. You could kind of move a Jersey barrier away, you could kind of move it with your car or your truck or whatever you had, but you're not gonna move these, and in fact, if you run over this, it's gonna disable your vehicle, whether it be a car or a truck, and so I am speaking in advocacy for them. They are not, it is not a barrier, it is a high-quality, high-tech piece of equipment, so.
And I appreciate that. They are quite expensive, and it's something we've added during the budgeting process. Public safety looked at, we looked at removable bollards or ones that automatically move up and down in the street. We were looking for something we could deploy quickly. One of our challenges is if we put concrete Jersey barriers versus water-filled one, it takes hours to get them in and out, and we have to shut the streets sooner, so I think they came up with a great solution to protect everybody at the highest quality, and at the same time, we've got some efficiency and timing.
Any other questions or comments? I have, yeah, do you have a question or comment?
No, I was just, I also was curious about these things, and for anybody that really wants to see what it is we're buying, you can just go on YouTube and type in the name of this thing. It is very, very impressive on what it can do to a high-speed vehicle coming in to a congested area. Very impressive.
Appreciate all the work, the research that our staff did to make this selection. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
No move.
Second. Have a motion as second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Ordinances.
Under ordinances this evening, item 9A1 establishes two-stop signs in Farmville Lake subdivision Phase 7. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion as seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this this evening? Hearing none, any comments?
Just happy to have them.
All right, anything else? All right, Lindsey with the roll call.
Adams.
Yes.
Oblent.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Whitton.
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9A2 establishes two stop signs in the Glenwood Farm subdivision Phase 1. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion as seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this this evening? Any comments or questions? Lindsey with the roll call.
Oblent.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon. Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Whitton.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
All right, item 9B1 is a request from East Mag Investments LLC to rezone approximately 34.7 acres located at 801 Ogletree Road from Rural to Limited Development District. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its January 12th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion as seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this this evening? Seeing a hearing none, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Anybody like to talk to the council about this particular item? Okay, all right, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? I know, Mr. Oblent, this is in your ward, and you have a couple of questions I know you want to.
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, Ms. Crouch, I'll just ask these questions, you can kind of direct as, as needed, but the first question I had, something that's come up in conversation with the neighbors is why the LDD zoning versus, with the PDD overlay versus the NC zoning that's, that's in the surrounding neighborhoods.
Absolutely, and staff's happy to answer that question, but I also, the applicants, a representative, Mr. Brett Basquen, is here, and I think it would be good if you heard from the applicant's representative why they requested that. I mean, I have the answer, but I don't want to speak on their behalf.
Mr. Basquen, could you come forward?
Sure, Brett Basquen, courtside group representing the applicant. So it's probably better answered by staff, but in regards to the NC zoning, the reason why the NC zoning was created was when the zoning ordinance was created, this NC zoning was actually used on existing neighborhoods, not new neighborhoods. So traditionally, we don't, when we come in for new zoning, we usually come in with DDH, LDD, the normal zoning. So the NC zoning wasn't created as a new district, it was more put in place on existing subdivisions back when the zoning ordinance was redone in the, what was it, the 80s?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, the NC zoning where he's going has a different setbacks, and the setbacks were generated based on measuring the distance from houses at the time in those neighborhoods, how they sat back from the street, the front, the side, and the rear setbacks, and so the setbacks are very different in the neighborhood conservation zoning district, depending on the size of your lot versus all other zones in the city.
And then, on top of that, we went with the LDD zoning and the PDD overlay that really handcuffs us more than, than just the NC 84 zoning. So essentially, we're presenting you a plan, and if approved, that's the only thing we can do, right? Any deviation, modification from that anything has to come back before this board as a, as a rezoning condition. If the zoning ordinance changes, and I'm in NC 84, then you change with the zoning requirements, but because I'm in a PDD, I'm locked in to whatever is on this plan that we agree to now, it's set in stone. It doesn't matter if the zoning ordinance changed, my, my, my site-specific zoning on what we're doing and what we're showing is, is locked in. So it, it really handcuffs us more than anything, and so that's, you know, it's just the nature of that zoning, but that was the, the, the reason for the NC stuff. I, I've been here for almost 20 years now, I've done a lot of rezonings. I've never rezoned anything to NC zoning, you know? If anything, we've rezoned out of NC or done something like that. We've never placed that zoning on a, you know, on a, on a new infill-type development.
Mr. Basquen, though, also, based on the environmental conditions of some of the lots, and I'm talking about slope, streams, and wetlands, some of the setbacks would have been challenging to fit a building envelope in under the NC zoning district.
Yeah, correct, yeah. So we have some, I mean, we do have deed restrictions on top of all this that are even more restrictive, but in the deed restricting, the rear setback is the only one that's really not, is not defined in that one, and, and, and then our, our, our LDD or the PDD allows us to have a little bit of relief on the rear setback.
So the, the LDD with the PDD, Ms. Crouch, that would accomplish really what's in our land use plan, you would say, overall with the PDD overlay.
Absolutely. We also have our principal planner, Mr. Logan Kip, here, who handled this case, but generally speaking, and I'll have Logan take a little bit deeper dive in it, there's a couple of things, which is they are completely locked down, no matter, no matter what, and you saw those conditions, and we're also talking a little bit about the next case, but, you know, much to come. The PDD is a very important component of, of this, and we certainly don't recommend that you approve this zoning from a staff level and not approve the overlay. That's what changes things, and Mr. Kip, do you have some things you'd like to add?
No, I would just mention the last time a property was zoned to an NC zone was in 2005 for the Cotswold, but since that time, we have an early rezoned property to NC. PDD is really the, the best route to condition a property to what's being approved, and so if the PDD is approved, like Brett was saying, that's locked in with that approval, and there's very specific criteria that would trigger having to come back before the council to make any kind of changes.
What, get, an example would be what, density or land use or conditional uses?
It's pretty much locked down. Even a change in the street configuration could trigger a PDD having to get an amendment.
Okay.
And most of the conditions that are in the PDD now basically reinforce most of the deed restrictions and stuff that the neighbors were concerned about anyway, so the minimum lot size and all that stuff was.
Two-acre lots.
Correct. All that is on, in the PD side, in the PDD conditions on it.
Sure.
Basically further, you know, basically.
And to get to that, the LDD is all you're considering at this time.
Right.
You know, we'll, we'll go to the next one. And I want to remind the council, we can never condition a base zone without an applicant's, you know, approval. You did that on a one-off thing on CDD recently because it's caught in the middle. The LDD is, is what it is, but on the planned development district, conditions may be placed on there, and from day one, the condition has been recommended by staff that these be two-acre minimum lots and single-family detached residential only, and those are the only uses, no other conditional uses were applied for, no other housing types, just that.
Okay, and another question on, that came up during discussion, I think, was some questions, or with my discussions with the neighbors around flooding in the wetland areas that are in there, and I believe we've, we've had some meetings with the neighbors around there about some of those issues, so, Ms. Fraser, I'm not sure, or Ms. Crouch, if y'all want to answer a question about the meetings with the neighbors out there.
Ms. Fraser can describe it. She's met with the neighbors, and we can go over a little bit to, I think there's a lot of, you're talking about over 30 acres and 15 homes, you're not talking about 100% lot coverage with asphalt and concrete and other things, and I think the neighbors have been extremely concerned about potential flooding and, and other things, and I'd like to remind you, when we talk about this particular creek, Tiger Town drains through this creek, a good bit of Tiger Town, you know, there's lots of things upstream from it, so Ms. Fraser, you want to talk a little bit about those conditions?
Yeah, I did meet with the neighbors maybe a couple of weeks ago. We talked about the extent of the floodplain. We do have floodplain regulations that provide protections for the city as well as the regulated floodplain area. We are in the process of reviewing Mr. Basquen's plans as far as stormwater drainage, erosion control, street layout, those kinds of things, and we're not, we have not approved them yet, but I did tell the neighbors that based on the information in our design guidelines, there are protections that there should be no adverse impacts downstream based on this development.
Okay, thank you. Okay, mainly all my questions, I'll just summarize a few things. First of all, thank you to the neighbors around this area I've met with, everyone that I've met with has been very cordial conversations and very appreciative of that, and the city staff, and, and the developer too, for y'all. And the city staff and, and the developer too, for y'all's efforts in putting together a plan, I think, that is suitable for the neighborhood and the area around it. So, I think the LDD with the PDD overlay accomplishes a lot of what we're, of the goals of the neighborhood as well as the development. So, I think it's overall a great plan. I appreciate everyone's efforts and what they did there. Thank you.
Anyone else from the council have comments or questions regarding this?
Yes, I have a question.
Yeah.
Just procedural, procedural question. Is it acceptable to vote on this item contingent on the following item being approved?
I don't believe so because unless, and the planning staff can remind me, we've ever voted on, in the city engineer a PDD before. Here's the problem, a planned development district is only being requested to overlay on the limited development district, which it doesn't yet exist on this parcel. So, you must do one and then the other. In state law, unlike when you're talking about annexations, because there is such a thing as pre-zoning, and that does, does happen. State law is not provide a provision for this that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I just, I want to make sure I understand exactly what I'm voting on, so I'm going to ask three or four questions here, if I may. Do the covenants trump any zoning designation that we might label it with, whether NC or PDD?
Not as far as the city is concerned. It's not under the purview of the city in any way, shape, or form.
So, for example, with dwelling size, or lot size, or setbacks, or residential use only, or only one detached, single-family dwelling per lot, we have to rely on whatever we zone it with.
You rely exactly on the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations from the city's perspective. Any covenants issues or private matters between private property owners?
Yes, okay. So, in a way, it's apples and oranges. One is enforced in court. That would be the covenants, and then the other one, how would that be enforced if...
Well, both technically could be enforced in court, but I mean, one is the law of the city, and the zoning ordinance is a law of the city. The other, you know, and that would be, if somebody's not complying with that, the city would be a party to that. On the covenant side, the city's not a party to the covenants if we're not owning property there. So, therefore, that's just purely private matter that could be adjudicated in civil court.
So, both stand, but, I mean, one doesn't trump the other, but both have to be...
Well, I couldn't answer that question, meaning without the specific circumstances, but the court could not compel the city that I'm aware of to enforce covenants because they're not a law of the city. They could compel private property owners to deal with it, but not the city.
Okay, and just so I understand, the covenants say that there's a 50-foot setback from the rear line and 150-foot from the front line, and 40 feet to the left and to the right of any dwelling. That's what I read in the covenants.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of the covenants because they're not germane to the zoning consideration.
And also, what I think I know is that NC anything, 90 or whatever, it's 50-foot to the rear, 45-foot to the front, and 18 to the back. I have no idea what a PDD overlay would require of the houses, if anything.
The PDD overlay, I'll have Mr. Kip speak to this. The, the base zone of limited development district would prevail based on their housing type, and he can speak to that.
Yeah, you are correct with the NC, I'll say NC 90 would be 45 feet on the front, 50 on the rear, and 18 on the sides. In LDD, for conventional, single-family home lots, the front setback is 25 feet, the side is a minimum of 15, and the rear is 40 feet. But it is my understanding that the applicant is proposing all homes to meet the deed restrictions.
Okay, and that was the LDD?
That's LDD.
Do you have any numbers for the PDD, or does it matter?
It's based on the base zoning.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. Well, if we approve a PDD overlay, then what we're also, I don't have a resolution in front of, mayor recommendation for a motion or any, I don't know what I'm voting on, but if we approve the PDD overlay, it would be for 15 single-family attached homes. Is that...
That's correct. I just want to remind everybody, because I'm required to by law, that is the next discussion on the next agenda item, not the LDD. Sorry.
You're correct, yeah.
Yeah, I want to make sure that we don't confuse what we're voting on, so...
It's all in my head, it's all mushed.
And they are in tandem together, I understand that, but I want to make sure we clarify on the record with that one, that question.
All right, a couple of final questions. They're not nearly as full of tension, I guess, but is Kentwood Drive, is that going to be open to Ogletree?
No, it is not.
Okay. And the only access is just as drawn in the master development plan? Okay, would there be, and I may be getting ahead of myself, I don't know where this comes in, but is there a pedestrian trail of any sort?
There, there is not. The Planning Commission that has full purview over subdivisions at their February 9th meeting, there was discussion about that, and they removed that condition. And meaning they didn't adopt it, so therefore it is not required.
And green space as well.
You know, there's, so, there's a, and there was a staff recommendation having to do with that. The resolution that is before you when you get to the PDD, the Planning Commission did not recommend that that be part of that resolution. There is, not to be confused with a greenway easement that is required to be dedicated as part of this per our subdivision regulations and policies.
Do you know where that would be? Is that on lot...
That's in essence, it confuses people in direction, but it's on the opposite side of the creek from this subdivision. You could say it's north-ish, but that, you know, we get into northeast-ish.
Is that out of Lot 12?
Out of what was Lot, well, what is Lot 12 now, it's on the other side, yeah, of the creek, if you see the creek running through there.
All right, I think that, that's all my questions at this time. Anybody else? Okay, Lindsey with the roll call.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Briswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Foreman.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Whitten.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Coblenz.
Yes, ma'am.
Anders.
Yes.
All right, now we'll get to the next agenda item regulating this. So, item 9B2 is a request from East Mag Investments to apply the planned development district overlay to approximately 34.7 acres located at 801 Ogletree Road with a base zone of limited development district. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its January 12th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion of seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this this evening? Seeing a hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
I have, I'm not ready for a vote. I need to ask that I know exactly what we are to vote on, either in writing, or somebody needs to read it from something.
So, what you're voting on is, there's a Planning Commission resolution. I traded out that resolution today. In essence, they have recommended to you approval of the planned development district. It's right in front of you on the dais, and it was also in your packets, but we added the conditions to it to make clear what they recommended moving forward. So, you are voting on that. You have the right as the governing body to amend conditions, put things back, take things out. That's your call. But they're recommending approval with the conditions that are in the resolution before you. And so, you know, some of those conditions, you know, are germane to the lot sizes and so on that we talked about earlier.
So, just for the record, we have a minimum of, of two acres. We have permitted use as only single-family residential.
Correct.
We have a maximum of two driveways, and that is the only access from Ogletree.
Correct.
And that's, plus the water resource management.
Absolutely. That's, that's, those are the conditions added, and again, as we discussed, only on planned development districts do you see those. You see them with conditional uses a good bit, but in zoning, you don't normally see them except for with PDDs.
And just, just as a matter of public information, this is all that can be done until we have a meeting like this sometime in the future to change this document.
That's correct, and this is where this, in a title search, anything like that, this is running with the land. This is a zoning agreement between the city and the property owners, in essence, and this runs with it. And that's what Mr. Basquin was talking about. If the parameters of the neighborhood conservation zone ever change, that's all well and good, but that has nothing to do with this. So, the council from time to time will amend the zoning ordinance, and they are having to live a certain parameters in here. And right now, unless this goes through Planning Commission, gets to you, and you or the next governing body decides to amend it, otherwise, this is what they would have to stick with to develop this property.
And there's no wiggle room on this. They have to stick with this unless they go back through the...
No wiggle room, and we actually even removed a condition, we used to allow planned development districts to expire, and when they expired, it would take the base zoning away. That is no longer the case after we had a problem with that previously, and now the base zone does not expire. It remains, it does, I mean, the base zone, would it revert back to rural? So, if they don't move forward with this, and I expect this to be likely very popular, but if they didn't move forward, it would just revert back to the rural zoning district if the PDD expired. And one can only expire after lack of activity on it, which is, how many months is it now?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen.
Any other questions, comments? Again, Mr. Coblenz, I want to thank you for your hard work with your neighbors out there, taking all the calls, having all the meetings, so...
Thank you.
Okay, all right, Lindsey with the roll call.
Briswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Foreman.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Coblenz.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Anders.
Yes.
Ironically, item 9B3 is a request from Clinton Properties Group to amend the planned development district overlaid on approximately 236.54 acres zone development district housing and 4.19 acres zone rural in the Woodward Oaks Development to modify Phase 5 by replacing what was proposed to be 29 cottage housing units with 27 townhouse units. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its January 12th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion of seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this this evening? Seeing a hearing none, at this time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council regarding this topic, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Yes, sir.
Last time there's a sign-in sheet. Do I need to sign it? Okay. My name's Bob Hodgson. I work at, oh, work, sorry. Long day. I reside at 806 Clear Springs Drive, which is in the Woodward Oaks subdivision. I have a few remarks prepared, so, looking at the amendment, the population density seems to not be impacted. That's, that's a good thing. Aspects of the amended proposal creates a potential for a thoroughfare from Farmville to North Donahue. Be that as it may, having a thoroughfare seems unsafe as drivers already speed down Jamesburg. The amendment requests for front setbacks to be shortened. I think it's 20 feet to 10 feet. So, you know, where are the kids going to play that are, you know, occupy those homes, right? Just seems like a, a safety issue to have that happen. Further, the streets are fairly narrow than, which is the minimum. For that particular category, I think it's arterial, I don't remember exactly, but it's a minimum of 27 feet. And people park on the street from time to time while kids regularly play in their front yards due to the limited size of the rear lot. In certain situations, this creates blind spots for vehicular traffic and significant safety hazards for the children at play. In this amendment, there appears to be a direct access from the school to the neighborhood streets. This is the first time, you know, anybody's seen this. Approval of this modification, although shown in the Second Amendment Plan/Plat, I couldn't find it written. I also got a copy of the traffic study, and I couldn't find it in there either. And so, I tried to, you know, talk to the city and the state and get an understanding, like, get a, I guess, acquire a copy of that plan, and they just kind of bouncing back and forth, you know, the city said it was really on the state, and the state was like, we're not giving it to you unless you're a certain person, even through the public records request. So, I just kind of, you know, in the month that I had, I just got too busy and couldn't focus on that. You know, maybe it could, someone can speak to it. So, my understanding is that access will be drivable, so it's basically on a funnel cars through the neighborhood. Would there be any way for this forum to proposition or require this access to be pedestrian only as a condition of approval? It seems that vehicular access would drastically increase the vehicle traffic through the neighborhood, which is already dealing with traffic issues in its infancy. I understand there are other ways to control traffic, such as speed bumps, traffic circles, et cetera, but in my experience, those type of restrictions are local to that specific area, and the area between them turns into the back straightaway. I mean, it just, people hit it and then speed up. So, further, at the city planning meeting, attendees pointed out the fact that we cannot even keep a stop sign up, so how are we to be convinced that additional traffic control measures will be implemented and/or effective, or maintained? The Realtor or sale representative of the developer assured myself and others that Miracle Row is going to be finished from North Donahue to Farmville. It wouldn't come through the neighborhood, so that's just, I don't know if that could be submitted as some, you know, some condition of approval to have it finished, you know, from North, North Donahue to Farmville, would just not come through the neighborhood. In the amendment, a proposed item with a new plan depicts an additional amenity bidding, amenity building. However, language in the documents such as, as potential or most likely cause concern because it is very weak and generic. Terms like shall and shall not seem more binding and appropriate. Reason for concern is due to previous promises and assurances of more amenities, namely a playground for the children for which the neighborhood is/was designed and marketed to various people, and difficulties during, difficulties during the building process attempting to... Basically, the builder made a lot of promises. I don't want to make this about what the builder, the promises the builder made everybody, but I just want that to be understood, right? And our main concern is what's best for Auburn and what's best for our community, not necessarily what's best for some specific developer, if you will. There were a lot of promises made, and a lot, if a lot of those promises were or had been delivered on, then a lot of these safety issues that we see may not be present because the kids would have a place to, to commune and, and play, and, you know, you could walk, we do have sidewalks. We do have sidewalks. We do have a nature trail that goes around the entire thing. But, you know, if you're centralized, that's a, that's a pretty good poke from where you're at, right? I mean, it's a quarter-mile walk to, just to access that thing, and the access for said nature trails, you know, it's, it's limited. I mean, it's basically one end of the neighborhood or the other, unless you want to walk through a bunch of mud. So, I mean, it's just, there's a lot of safety things, there's a lot of weak language involved in this, and we feel that this body, because we haven't been successful in, you know, working with the developer, having representation on their board from the neighborhood. The board is, the HOA is comprised of the developer solely, like, we don't, we've asked to be on it and, and head it up and help them out, but, you know, they just, they don't want to, you know, for lack, for lack of a term, play ball, is where I'm going with it. And we see this as our only recourse, so...
Please state your last name again.
Hodgson. It's H-O-D-G-D-O-N.
Okay.
Sorry, there's a lot, only five minutes.
Thank you.
It was. Would it be fair to summarize that your concerns of car access, the original plan for vehicles, and now there's a change, and then how that's going to affect the safety, the overall pedestrian, child safety in the neighborhood, I mean...
So, that's primary, and then secondary is you've got 500 homes, and you got one amenity building and one pool. So, the new plat says, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna have, we probably might maybe have an amenity building. There's, the language isn't strong enough for me, like, where I'm from, in the nuclear field, you use terms like shall and shall not, right? You bind somebody to something. You don't say, ah, I might go do this, the regulator will get you, right? I understand this in the nuclear industry. I get it. But at the same time, it provides confidence for people that are living in the area that what is being said will happen, especially based on the promises that were made beforehand, and they're not delivered on. You know, we, like, we have no recourse, and we're trying, and anyways. So, that would be my, that'd be my second, my secondary.
Sure.
Primary and secondary.
Well, you were speed reading through there, and I'm not sure I captured everything, so I was trying to...
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to summarize it. No, that's fine. No, I get it, I get it. We'll tell you did a good job, so... Has that email been sent to anybody on staff, do you know?
No, we, we've just been bouncing around through. I can type it up. I haven't, I just, last meeting.
Okay.
They recommended I just read through, and I said, well, I'll print handouts, and, you know, I can send it to Ms. Beth, that, that works. She's my board, so...
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hey, thank you for your time.
Just real quick, I don't want to confuse anybody. You're fine to see, you're fine to sit. The description on the screen is not, not correct. We're not rezoning anything. It's just amending the PDD. Sorry about that. Staff was pointing that out. What's in your packets is correct. It's... packets is correct. It's just, that makes it sound like you're rezoning. You're just amending the PDD.
Good. The public hearing is still open. Anybody like to address the council? Please give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
All right. My name is Andrew Peacock. I do reside at 1621 James Burke Parkway. I was the second house on James Burke Parkway in the development. I was not an easy sell. My wife and I, we met with the Realtor Travis Chase that represented our developer five times to ask a bunch of questions, questions that would have made Councilman Mormon's questions look very short. We had a lot of concerns, number one, being the safety being on James Burke Parkway. We were shown the first revision of what was being proposed for our neighborhood. We were never shown a second one. On that one, we didn't have townhouses on James Burke Parkway. We were told that all houses would be 25 feet or further away from the curb. There would be four to six bedrooms, just like ours. They would match. When we went to the meeting last month, I was shocked to see what was actually being proposed with the new townhouses and being asked that they only be 10 feet away from the curb, and a curb directly off of Highway 72 or Farmville Road. The site issues that this would create, as well as children, such as mine, playing in the street are a great concern. We don't have large lots there. Our lots are very small. They have larger houses, so there's not a lot of room for the kids to play. A lot of them play in the front yards. The danger is, it's mind-boggling to me that somebody would ask for these townhouses to be built 10 feet away from the right-of-way there. As Mr. Hodgson pointed out, we've had a lot of promises that have fallen short. One thing that we ask with young children, would there be a playground? We were told absolutely there would be on the area just above the pool area. According to Lee County GIS, that's a 10.75 plot there, 10.75 acres. A lot of the residents have inquired about it and been told that's not a large enough space for the playground. It's been removed, in my beliefs, to meet the open space criteria needed for this new revision. We've had things like our pool that has three lights in it, or at least it has three holes where the light should be, and electrical wiring underneath there. There's no lights. We have issues with our clubhouse, where siding has fallen off for several months and not been repaired. I was nearly in an accident where the aforementioned stop sign was absent, has been absent for four months, with no concern to the developer. It was brought up several times. There's not a stop sign. It's been removed. It's whatever the issue was, it's not there. There's been a lot of promises that have been made empty. And so, when I look at the website and I see PDD zoning, my concern is that it says the greatest flexibility available to the developer. My question is, what has the developer done to afford more flexibility? They're already not delivering on what they promised. With this being a hot topic at our neighborhood meetings, our neighborhood pool, unfortunately, we don't have a whole lot of representation here tonight. You look at promises such as 10 miles of walking trails. The developer's not touched one inch of those walking trails. That's been done by a resident, Bill Perry, and other volunteers from the neighborhood who have built and maintained those. My son is a Boy Scout. That's going to be part of his project that he spends helping clear and maintain those as well. Basically, as a resident, I'm standing here asking, can we hold the developer to some of the past promises before we go any further? And that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? We'll close the public hearing. Ms. Crouch, there was a couple of comments related to changes from the original PDD. There was, I would, I don't want to, I guess I can use the word accusation, that they haven't owned up to what the original PDD set forth. Is that, in fact, the case? And if that was, did it go back through the system as the amendment is looking to do tonight? And I know Mr. Baskin-
No, our staff speak to a good bit of that, but one of the things is, what a real estate agent and a developer tell potential property buyers and owners, maybe something very different than what the city staff is looking at and what they are required to do as a part of their master development plan, zoning or subdivision regulations. And so, I, you hear frequently from citizens that are very frustrated about that, and that, again, we are very happy and will gladly require anyone to do whatever is required by the city, but beyond that, we have no authority to promises that were made. And so, I can have our staff weave through if walking trails were part of the original master development plan, and it said when they were going to install those and so on. We can speak to if that was a condition of approval or a requirement, or if that was marketing in terms of, and that did not involve the city. And we can also talk that there was always going to be a road connection through to Farmville. Nothing about that has changed. That was from day one. There was some shifting from former Miracle Road being improved, or parts of Miracle Road, to actually shifting a lot of it through the subdivision. The city engineer can speak to that. And like I said, will gladly speak to, if anything. I can tell you, if things aren't being complied with, when you look at staff recommendations, as we'll also say that there's an issue, and these things must be complied with by a certain point in time. And so, I'll have, I'll have City Engineer Fraser just go over a little bit about Miracle Road. Also, I'm going to put up on the screen if we need to the originally approved master development plan, because it's not in your packets, and I'll have Greg put that up in just a minute.
Yes, the master plan is compliant with what we've seen from the beginning, as Megan mentioned, Miracle Road. And James Burke Parkway is actually turning into Miracle Road. This council actually vacated and has vacated portions of Miracle Road over the past several months. So, Miracle Road will be abandoned on the north end of the development. The end closest to Sarah Lane will remain, but the rights of way have been vacated and will be recorded as these plats are recorded. So, the main road through the development will be James Burke Parkway, and it's consistent with the master development plan.
Was there a walking trail that was a condition of their PDD?
From my recollection, it wasn't required, but the developer offered to do trails.
That's correct. In the original master development plan for the PDD rezoning, they had talked about doing some bike trails and things like that. That was formalized in 2019 amendment, where they received an incentive in exchange, essentially do reduce setbacks in exchange for increased open space and biking trails. So, those will be expected to be completed as the development finishes out. And so, I think a lot of the comments we've heard have been related to that this is an ongoing development, so they're not finished with the build-out of this project.
So theoretically, Logan, would we hold up final certificates of occupancy, acceptance of right-aways? What would be the triggers?
The final plating, the last phase, would require to show any outstanding open space that was shown in the master development plan, any amenity lots, things like that, that have not been built yet.
What's the timeframe on this entire project?
Years.
May of 2030 would be the last phase.
We have the applicant representative, Mr. Baskin's here. Can we ask him a couple of questions?
Absolutely. And then, real quickly, I'm putting the current master development plan you have in your binders, the proposed one. This is as it sits currently, so I also wanted to show you the road configurations and how one gets through there toward Farmville, largely unchanged.
So, real quick, before Mr. Baskin comes up, the conversation about a 10-foot setback off of West Farmville, based off of this layout, does not seem like that's the case. It seems like it's much further off of Farmville than in the-
Yeah, that's incorrect. The 10-foot setback that's referenced is the, as part of the incentive and exchange, there's a reduction in the front setback, but it's clearly stated in the conditions that that's only applicable on the residential lots that are not on James Burke Parkway, so the side streets. That's where the 10-foot setback is. The reason for the 10-foot setback is most of the homes that this developer builder builds has the garages in the back, so it has a longer driveway, so that there's more room for cars to park on the house lot and not in the, not in the street. You know, the city's regulations allow you to park on a public street in the road there, but, you know, their home sites, how they set them up in here, is for the garage to be in the back for these longer driveways to encourage people to get off the streets on that 10-foot setback. You know, just a couple, I can address some of these. I'm sure that you're, you have concerns on. This is an active construction site, right? There's over 500 homes out here. This thing's only like, maybe 30% completed in regards to number of lots, and not near that on the number of homes. The current amenity, pool, clubhouse, and stuff that's installed there, that was done right after Phase 1 was complete and right in the middle of Phase 2 and Phase 3 construction. So, these guys did build an amenity on the front end. The trail system that you're talking about, Mr. Perry is part of a 501(c)(3) that's a bike riding group, and those guys, kind of the agreement was, is if we dedicated the open space and allowed them the room, they wanted to build the bike trails out here, and the developer complied and worked with them. So, they have built a pretty significant trail system through there, and there will be more. This thing was originally approved in 2017, okay? In 2019, we came back for an amendment when the developer sold the property to the city for the fire station, okay? Then, we came back in 2021 with an amendment incorporating when the school nailed down here. And so, all along, all along, from day one, it was explicitly clear and made to us as the applicant at the time that James Burke Parkway was replacing, that there had to be a residential collector, a direct connection between Farmville and North Donahue. Currently, at that time, Miracle Road, which is still a gravel road, was a county road. And so, you know, the thought was that this was going to be that collector, residential collector road connecting through there, and that Farmville Road was going to be abandoned for a majority of that area. It wasn't until after we got our PDD approved that another development on the other side of here, which now utilizes Miracle Road and paved the first part of Miracle Road, came in. That was after this. But I want to say that that's always been the plan. Miracle Road has always been a plan to be abandoned through this site. And so, you know, that was on the original 2017 approval. The road network in connection to the school, that was done as part of that 2021 amendment. There's nothing changed on that. The only change that you're approving right now is on that plan that you see, those orange, that, those units that are colored orange, those are townhomes. Those were previously approved in 2021 amendment. The only thing that we changed was there was, we got approval for 25 cottage-style housing units, which was a different product type. And all we're doing is changing those cottage-style units to townhomes. So, where these townhomes front the road, it's the same as it was on the last approval in 2021. No changes there.
Real quick, though, where they front the road, you'll see a middle road. It's the orange to the far right of your drawing, running through. That was just approved by Planning Commission to be a private street, correct, Mr. Baskin?
Correct.
And so, some of these they're going to face, but the homes that face James Burke Parkway, Brett, those will not have driveways on that side. They'll enter through the private road. Is that correct?
On the orange townhomes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So, with it being a residential collector street, we're limited by city regulations on the number of curb cuts, the number of driveways we can have on there. And so, we have these street front, it's kind of these townhomes, street-fronted there, to where it's rear access to them. There won't be driveways. They'll be very similar to the townhomes that were built on the front side of the, on the Phase 2, up in the front side off of Donahue there. Again, they front the public street with rear alley access. In regards to the traffic impact study, Lord, I've done five or six different traffic impact studies, whether they were for the neighborhood here or for the school going next door there. The city has copies of all those traffic impact studies, has always been taking into account the school traffic going through there. The city encouraged and wanted the connection between there as well. Just, you know, the way schools get served and the bus traffic and all that kind of stuff, if you're inside the two-mile radius, you know, the buses don't run. So, it's either, you know, bikes walking or parents dropping off. And so, you know, the connection to the school, we thought was important to the city, and it was important to the developer as well. In regards to open space, we more than exceed the open space requirement. If you have an amenity within the open space, it's part of the open space. There's no separation in regards to that. There is a minimum amount of open space required by code, but there's technically not a requirement of what you have to have in those open space areas. Usually, you, you know, you provide that and complete those. We do have a pool and a clubhouse and a bath house currently up there. We ran into a situation on a, I've run into another situation where, in a PDD like this, we didn't designate that there was an amenity area there, and it prevented the neighbors who built or purchased around that amenity area, prevented the pool and clubhouse from being constructed because they opposed it. We had to come back through this body to get an amenity approved in that area. What we're, what we're doing right now is saying, "Hey, guys, there's going to be an amenity. If you're going to build around here, it may be a pool, it may be pickleball courts, it may be a playground, it may be something, but we plan on this being a recreational area, and that's what we're planning on." Market conditions kind of drive that, a lot of that on the development side.
Mr. Baskin-
I think that's all. I was just trying to go through that list, but I think that's all the ones I think I got interest for.
And thank you for answering those. And I, can I strongly suggest that you communicate with the applicant that maybe some increased communication with the homeowners as to a timeline and what the expectations are of the neighborhood and what they were indicated as marketable amenities, and what that would look like and a timeline for that. Just setting expectations will go a long way in goodwill throughout the neighborhood. And a lot of the things that were mentioned are things that are outside of our purview, and they're between the homeowners and the development group. So, I just, as the councilperson for this area, encourage you to go back and ask for maybe some increased communications and setting expectations.
No, I agree, and I can understand the frustrations as well. So, I've noted these down. I'll communicate that with them, so they're aware, and hopefully, they can work towards addressing that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Brett. Any other comments or questions from the council?
Yes, can you put the original plan back up, please?
Thanks.
What are these purple things that-
Those were the cottage homes.
And the orange on this drawing is-
Those are townhomes.
Okay, so the intent that was to make-
That part really wasn't changing. It's, the purple is changing to orange.
The purple is now changing to townhomes.
Mm-hmm.
And the road frontage onto-
James Burke.
James Burke, that was originally approved for the orange ones on this, on the old one here, are unchanged to what's being proposed now.
That's correct.
Is that right?
Yep.
All right. In the document here, it specifies that the specific bike trail should be defined and shown on the master development plan. I don't see that on the master development plan. Could somebody tell me where this specific bike trail is, is supposed to be on here? I'm on page 404, top paragraph. Specific bike trail should be defined and shown on the master development plan as required by the zoning ordinance.
These were staff comments. They're not conditions of approval. So, it'd be our recommendation that if there's another amendment, the plan be updated to show them, or if the applicant is willing to, to go ahead and update the master development plan and show those.
So, this is under the incentives. It's not under staff recommended conditions?
It's general staff comments. Are you referring to number?
Development incentives on the top of page 404.
If you look down on planning condition, general staff comments.
Right.
Yeah- Yeah, it's just saying, show bike trails that are to be provided as the exchange. It's it's a comment saying, as you submit plans, you've got to show those. That's reminding them you're not going to get through certain levels of our development improvement on the subdivision plat side if you don't do that.
All right, okay. Also specifies that open space improvements must be approved by both the planning director and the Parks and Recreation Director. Has Parks and Recreation approved any existing or any proposed open space improvements?
No, they haven't been before then, they've not been submitted, is that correct?
Okay. All right, it says?
So what what happens is, in a staff memo like this, we're describing what has to happen. Doesn't mean it's happened yet. It's it's telling you, these things will have to be done as you get development approvals. It's pointing that out as part of the exchange.
And that would have to be done by the final, by the final plat, okay?
There's a lot of this is for information of what our regulations say, summarizing into a document. And sometimes we weave subdivision regulation comments also in design and construction manual comments into here, just so that the planning commission and you have awareness that these requirements do exist at the staff level from rules you already adopted.
Okay, so it says we're going to we're going to give up impervious surface ratio and in exchange, we're getting these, this bike path.
And that was previously approved in the 21 amendment.
It was.
So you're not considering that tonight, that's just already there?
The second incentive is tonight, right? Isn't that on tonight's?
No, no, and? Logan?
So as part of the changing from cottages to townhomes, there is a little bit of a difference in the ISR requirements. And so I believe they're not necessarily getting a new incentive, they're just changing what that incentive is applied to. But it's the same, the same incentive and exchange as was approved previously, just now applied to townhomes instead of cottages.
Okay, I guess I'm not clear then, because it says the applicant is requesting an additional incentive exchange in addition to the one previously approved. So for any of this, there is a second incentive being proposed over and above what was on the books previously. And that's on page 304 at the bottom of the page.
Ms. Robinson's going to also speak to that.
I'm I'm sure there's good reasons and all, but I just want to know what they are.
So that second exchange was specific to the cottage housing. And since that is being replaced, that second incentive goes away. So this is a new request for a second incentive for the townhouses.
So Katie, in essence, they were both impervious surface ratio exchanges, which in essence is allowing them to to pave a little more or to put a bigger footprint if it if it meets the zoning ordinance requirements.
That's correct.
But are they akin to each other? It's pretty much the same thing? And and what Mr. Kip was saying is, this incentive was on cottage homes, but you actually, to put it on a townhome, you also have to swap it out. And that's what they're doing, they're just trading one for the other.
Okay, so the second incentive basically is already done, it's just a matter of of changing?
Because the housing type is changing from cottage homes. So, you know, cottage homes are typically small, little detached homes that have big grassy areas around them. There there's a few projects around town, and so that's why there's a little bit of a difference of exchange. We define them differently.
And as part of that second incentive, they're supposed to be building this specific bike trail, which is supposed to be shown on the MDP, but isn't. Correct?
At the end of the day, what they're saying is, you're going to have to show it. So we have staff comments at times that things are not fully completed. So in order for this to be a validated approval, they're going to have to submit a plan showing the bike trails to the staff. So and if they don't, they will have no approval.
All right, I don't have any other questions, thank you.
I just got a question. This this cemetery I see right here, is this a private cemetery or?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The cemetery, the James Burke, Mr. James Burke, it's a descendant of his and his grandson actually owns and retains the right of that cemetery and, you know, is responsible for it, let's put it that way. But yeah, it's a family of the of the family that sold this property. It's it's their, one of their original descendants.
While while we have you, real quick, have you seen any renderings of where a proposed bike path may be?
Yeah, for the most part, it parallels the creek on the planned north side there, through there, and kind of loops up into a lot of the greenways that 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 come off of there is essentially where they, we had the the bike trail coming. And and looping back was the intent originally. So mainly along the creek side down there, along the creek buffer, and then it kind of loops up in between the cul-de-sac areas on the plan there.
And would it tie into where there's like an open lot here on the?
Yes.
On the west side, like right as you come in?
Yeah, so like when you come in and you come down your left, you see that little green area, there's a connection to the bike trail there, and there'll be more like that throughout.
Okay. But not going through someone's lot?
No, 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 not not coming. We're trying to tie them directly into the Boulevard, into the James Burke Parkway, for the most part. There are a few fingers off of the ends of the cul-de-sacs that are between lots, but none of it is direct access through anybody's lot. Any other questions? Comments?
Okay. Any any reason why this shouldn't be delayed and we study it?
Crouch?
What is it that you would need to study?
Well, information that has been brought to light tonight, I I feel like is new information for me. And and I don't, I don't feel comfortable saying that it didn't matter. So I guess I don't know what I don't know right now.
That's certainly up to the city council. As you've seen in the memos, the staff and planning commission are comfortable. So that that's certainly up to you and that is your decision as a as a body.
This had had a whole lot changed since the first time we saw this.
No, sir, you were on the city council when when this started, and so this is very similar to the original plans.
And I do recall when we first were shown this, when we were asked to annex this property, because it was outside of the study area, study area at that time. And so it was a great conversation that the individuals who were very proud of the walking slash bike trails, that would be a part of this. And I I would hope that those individuals know that this is of great interest to those who are buying homes in that area. And I would say that, as I've asked Mr. Basquelin to go back and have a conversation with the developer, that communication is key and paramount to to the comfort level of those who are buying homes and setting expectations is very important. I do think we've 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 asked and we've were given information on quite a few of the questions that were asked. And and some of them, again, are issues between the developer and the homeowners, but again, goes back to communication. And I do think the information about the bike slash walking trails, we've received additional information and it would be helpful if we could, at some point in the future, have a map that shows that information. But based off of just the changing from cottages to townhomes and not affecting the density, which is which is the item that is before us this evening, I feel comfortable moving forward and voting on it.
The density for the whole development has not changed, correct?
No.
Okay, so overall, it's still the same. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Mormon, you you made a request, is should I receive that as a some type of, as a motion to postpone?
You would need a motion to postpone because you've already got a motion and a second otherwise.
Yeah, we've got a motion and a second, so we'd have to have a motion to postpone, correct?
Good.
Make sure I follow through your your interest and wishes.
I move that we postpone for two weeks, or till the next meeting, I should say.
Which is actually three weeks, I believe.
Yes, it would be March, March 14th is the next meeting.
All right, is there a second? Second.
Need to do a roll call on this one just because?
So we have a motion and a second to postpone to the next meeting, which is March the 14th. So if you vote, if you say yes, then you would be voting to postpone. If you say no, you're voting to go ahead and move forward with the vote tonight, correct?
May I, we have discussion?
Yeah, please, yep.
Initially, when the citizens make, the residents make comments, it alarmed me because it was the first I had heard of concerns off of this item. However, I do feel comfortable with the conversations and the questions that have been asked and the answers we've been given, based on the item that we're voting on this evening, which is the amending the PDD from cottages to townhomes, which is the task before us. We are not asking, nor are we shifting anything else related to the PDD. And so I don't understand what delaying it or postponing it to March the 14th will serve not only the residents in the area, but also the applicant's requests. And I would like a further explanation from those who are asking to postpone to clarify what they seek to gain from that.
Sure. Sunny or Kelly, would either one of y'all like to speak to that?
Fair enough. I I I accept your comments, it's spot on. And I just, the the concerns of the the neighbors, the the magnitude of the project, I don't know why we would need to push it off very far, but I I think that there's nothing that has been said tonight that we've had a chance to consider for more than five minutes. But as you say, the things that we're voting on have already been either voted on or not changed very much. So I accept those comments and I can't disagree with that.
Anyone else? You know, it's easy, it's easy to get involved in everything with the with a project of this size and scale and length, 20, 30 for the final build out. As Ms. Crouch refocused us earlier in the meeting, we're here to, we're here to to really focus on the amendment of this PDD, which involves these cottage homes going to townhomes. Any other comments? Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote on on postponing until March the 14th, okay? So yes, if you want to postpone, no, if you do not want to postpone, all right? Lindsey?
Adams?
No.
Owens?
No.
Dawson?
No, ma'am.
Rizwald?
No, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Witten?
No.
Sanders?
No.
Right, so now you're back to the main motion, which is move for approval.
So we have a motion and a second, are we through discussing this? Okay, we'll do the roll call on the approval.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Rizwald?
Yes, ma'am.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ready for resolutions?
Please.
Item 10A is a request from Longgolf USA for amended conditional use approval for commercial recreational uses to be located at 2601 East University Drive. And this approval request is only to remove a condition that was previously placed by the planning and commission and city council that stated that vegetation on the eastern portion of the property must remain undisturbed. The owner would like to place single-family residences in this area. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this amendment request at its February 9th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
All right, got a motion and a second. This time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council on this, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes to speak. We'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we postpone this item until the 14th of March to allow residents of the Shelton Mill area a better opportunity to figure out just what this is all about. I've received numerous comments of both email on Nextdoor and other sources asking that this be denied, but I I think what's, we owe it to the to the residents of that area to to understand this a little bit better. And I I move to postpone.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone. I want to make sure procedurally we're tracking that.
You're you're tracking perfectly.
All right, good. Any discussion on this motion to postpone? Any discussion from the council specifically?
Just for your information, has staff had a lot of contact with the neighbors that you're aware of and where signs were placed like they are with all?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I did receive some inquiries and provided additional detail by way of my Facebook page and Nextdoor. And as a result of that, I've continued to get additional questions on top of that as well. So that's that's why I would like to give the opportunity, or give the residents an opportunity to consider this further.
Do we, can we for this evening, understand from staff what, I mean, it states for single-family homes, but do we know how many can go there? What's, do we have any understanding of what is proposed for that area?
I understand it's a maximum of four homes, but in that base zone is CDD, Conference of Development District, so that does allow certain certain things, whether that would be a townhome or attached homes or what have you. Ms. Robinson, do you have any additional information?
No, the road frontage that's on that property, on the cab, is just over 200 feet. So for single-family residential, you have to have 50 feet. So they could have four, but the applicant indicated that they would only build three single-family residences.
Is the applicant here? Do we know?
They were at Planning Commission. We'd certainly be happy to correspond with them, get more information and make sure if you choose to postpone or, you know, strongly recommend they attend the next meeting.
Ms. Crouch, on the analysis here, it talks about that originally it was going to be left with the 15-foot buffer yard, but that homes were discussed when this was approved in May of 2020. Can the staff just kind of walk through that decision, how that was, how that came to fruition?
Yes, so this was the very first planning commission that was held on Zoom. So there was a little bit of miscommunication, I guess, because the applicant did indicate at that time that he planned on building residential on the eastern side. But staff made it a recommendation of condition of approval to leave that portion undisturbed. The applicant maybe did not hear that since we were on Zoom and didn't question it. So planning commission recommended approval with staff's conditions, so leaving that property undisturbed.
But the applicant thought that what was approved was three home sites?
Well, would allow.
Would allow for three home sites, yes, thank you for correcting me.
There's also discussion because you do have just past this, a current home. And so there was a good bit of discussion, and there was again last Thursday with the planning commission about, or on the ninth, about, you know, what's still buffering between existing homes and this, let alone potential for new homes built. So there's a little bit of discussion, there still is some buffering required to pick either way. So really, you know, it's it's interesting because you're right here at the entrance of DeKalb Street and East University Drive. The city engineer will have some serious concerns about driveway being too close to East University Drive. But when that, we cross that bridge again, this body adopts a lot of development regulations, of which you're the policymakers, we implement them. And a lot of that detail comes at the staff level in plan review, where there's not going to be a driveway right at the hard corner. The city engineer will protest handily.
And I will say that the residents of Shelton Mill were concerned primarily about wanting a buffer on that property. But a residential development there, three houses, would be more of a buffer than what's existing today, honestly.
Which is?
If you've been by?
A few trees and some?
Correct.
The scrub?
Scrub brush?
Well, the scrub brush has mostly been cleared, so you're talking about some trees.
Some trees.
Yeah. And, yeah. And, yeah, they're kind of limbed up, yeah. And so, I mean, that is still natural in its own way, but at the end of the day, there are also concerns. These are a smaller wiffle ball, for lack of a better term, so, and I think you're pretty much out with a nine iron or a pitching wedge with these, and there was a lot of discussion about who was going to hit whom's roof. And so a lot of those things were vetted in the original conditional use approval.
To Councilman Griswold's point about postponement, I do recall this item originally proposed, and it did generate a fair amount of citizen response. So to, to that end, it's always nice to make sure that the surrounding residents are aware of this development, and I can totally support your position on this, Councilman Griswold.
In my earlier check with the planning staff, it was only with regard to let you know if there was a ground swell at the Planning Commission meeting or there was not. And so awareness comes at many levels, and that's absolutely understood. Just wanted to give you information.
I, I fully agree, it may just be a case of the squeaky wheel, but the folks are, that have talked to me so far are adamant about leaving the natural vegetation area there in lieu of townhomes. So I want to give everybody in there an opportunity to, to voice their opinions and get back with me on, on where they're coming from.
If we were to postpone this and come back, could we, is there a possibility of requiring additional conditions stating that they
Absolutely.
can only be single-family homes and cannot be townhomes and/or?
It's a conditional use, and we will double check that. I don't see why not, but getting a precursor warning, we'll just double check.
Okay, thank you.
The single-family portion of it is fine, it's depending on if you say detached, attached, or otherwise. So we have to be very specific.
Sure. Because in line going south of that are?
Townhomes.
Are townhomes.
Any other comments? Right now, we have motion to second on the table to delay, postpone, excuse me, until March the fourteenth. Any other comments related to that? Okay, Ms. Crouch, would this be a, a voice, or should it be a?
You're a voice, you're fine.
Okay, all right. So all in favor of postponing until March the fourteenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll postpone until March the fourteenth, which we've not formally announced.
I'll remind you, you did close the public hearing, but you're well within your authority to reopen it at that time, should you choose to do so.
Okay, good, thank you.
Right, item ten B authorizes amending an existing interlocal agreement with the Lee County Commission for the purposes of clarifying the subdivision review and approval process in the City of Auburn's planning jurisdiction due to legislative act twenty twenty-one two nine seven. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its February ninth meeting.
Need for approval?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. This does not have a public hearing attached to it, so is there any discussion from the council?
I just.
Questions? Yes ma'am.
The only thing I just, can you explain this a little bit? I guess I missed the packet, packet being on Thursday, probably gave a good explanation of it. I read a lot of this in the packet, but I really didn't get a clear understanding.
In a nutshell, the city by state law has, has long had the authority with an agreement in place with the county to exercise our subdivision regulations within our planning jurisdiction. An act before the legislature in twenty twenty-one took our planning jurisdiction from five miles to three miles, and as of January, it's now one point five miles. So our, our authority only resides now at the one point five mile realm. And since there had been a legislative change, staff got together with Lee County, and it still allows a city and county to have an agreement about this, but it was decided the agreement was aging, and it should be revised. And so all this is saying is basically, we take the lead on subdivision review in the one point five miles. So any, from any point at our city limits, all around, we go one point five miles out, and if somebody wants to subdivide property in that area, we have jurisdiction on that. While we do collaborate with the county, this agreement is just re-upping what we already had. And then apparently, and previously, Lee County didn't have an out clause from it, but we did. And so now we both have an out clause. And this has been affected, the assumption is these properties will eventually come into the city limits. They don't always, and I do want to remind everyone listening, the city has no authority to forcibly annex anyone who is not currently in our city limits unless the legislature grants us that authority in specific cases. Last time we tried that was in the late nineties, early two thousands, and we went down in burning flames. And that had to do with South College Street and County Islands and trying to protect the city's main corridor and front door into the city. And that, you know, it is what it is. Alabama's a property rights state and very staunch about that, and that's where that is. So this also, I don't want confusion, anything about our subdivision regulations is an attempt by the city to force people to come into our city limits. It is not, but this does say when you're subdividing property that you comply with certain regulations of ours. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Yes, I have. Questions? So this one point five miles, for clarity, as, as we annex out into that, is the one point five mile shift?
It does shift. We did get that ability. Our police jurisdiction is frozen where it is today. And eventually, which is the same at one, one point five, but where it is, it's as of David Dorton will remind me, as of twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one? Yeah, in January of twenty twenty-one, wherever that police jurisdiction was at the time, and that distance, which is three miles, it stays there, and it never moves again. So if the city limits catches up to it, it catches up to it, and it only then moves by parcel by parcel that comes into the city limits.
And as far as taxes go, are we authorized to collect any taxes within that one point five mile?
Yeah, that tracks with the police jurisdiction. And, and the police jurisdiction tracks at the, it is the liquor and, no.
Cigarette.
Sorry, cigarette and gas tax, I always get the two confused. And I think as a reminder, the city previously, other jurisdictions have taxed other things in their planning and our police jurisdictions, and we have not. It's long been that way.
The reason I ask that is, I was noting in the agreement, there's nothing in this section shall be interpreted as allowing municipal planning commission or municipality to levy taxes or fees in its planning jurisdiction outside the corporate limits, except for fees related to regulation of subdivision. So.
That means other, other fees. I don't, it doesn't impact what we currently have.
No, it doesn't.
Is that state-enabled or others, otherwise? Go ahead.
And it's based on, the taxes that we have now is based on the police jurisdiction, not the planning jurisdiction.
Yeah, they're not tied together. We'll make it nice and confusing for you, but yes.
Yeah, that's a little confusing, yeah.
And I think there's been a lot of misnomers out there that other cities in the state may have done other things, and we have not been. We've only been in the police jurisdiction with the cigarette and gas tax.
Is there a possibility of cleaning that up so it's not so confusing? Because this specifically says we can't do it, but, but we do it because it's in the planning jurisdiction.
Because all the legislation is tied to the police jurisdiction. That's why, and that's different set of rules. This is just referring to the planning jurisdiction.
Okay, so can we delete that paragraph?
That is something that I would need to check with our legal counsel, and I don't believe Lee County would want us to delete that paragraph. What it's saying is we wouldn't attempt to impose a property tax or anything else upon land that's in the county, I'm pretty sure.
I understand what it's intended to do, but that's not what it says, and it's not what we're agreeing to. That's what, what concerns me. This says we will not do it. We will not levy taxes in the planning jurisdiction outside the corporate limits.
Correct, but we are, we have the police jurisdiction, which gives us the authority to.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it, it would be a lot clearer if that wasn't in here at all.
This has been fully reviewed by our legal team, correct?
It has.
You were aware as well? Yeah. We still have the authority to do what we're doing in the police jurisdiction from a taxing standpoint.
And our legal team was fine with this document?
Yes. Any modification thereof by the city council would require us to go back to Lee County. Because this is what we agreed that we would put forward, and modification of the document would make us go back.
Any other comments? Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Right, Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
At this time, we'll have the citizens open forum. This is an opportunity for you to speak to the council about whatever might be on your mind. We'll ask you to come forward and share your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes. Remember that you're, you're addressing the city council as a body, and you're not addressing an individual member of the council, nor a city staff member. There'll be times that there are questions that cannot be answered at the moment, and to continue to facilitate the orderly flow of the meeting, the city council can ask the city manager to follow up on questions and comments after the meeting, okay? All right. Who'd be first? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Steve Cosgrove. I live at nineteen twenty-seven Watercrest Drive here in Auburn. A lot of heavy subjects and dialogue tonight, and important stuff, so forth. And for the benefit of our guests here, that, what I'm going to talk to you about is going to be a lot lighter. Has to do with, has to do with this special little place here in, in Auburn's, in Auburn life, it's Felton Little Park. I first stepped on Felton Little Park, it was February twentieth nineteen seventy-five, so it was forty-eight years ago yesterday. And coincidentally, after twenty-two months of working and talking to over a hundred people and thousands of conversations and infinite number of, of stories from the, from citizens and so forth, Scotty Lett and his, and his friend Gene, who worked with them, and I moved the four thousand two hundred and forty-two pound stone with a really nice bronze plaque on it and set it in place at Felton Little Park. By the way, Jackie Robinson would be proud of the weight of that stone, forty-two, forty-two. Being a baseball fan. But this is literally twenty-two months in, in, in the making, but it was a lot of fun, but a ton of work. I'll tell you that. And I really wanted to extend appreciation to you, Ron, finally, you know, giving me the green light on that after years of pestering you about this, and Bill Hamm, and every one of you gentlemen, and ladies, and Megan, and Becky Richardson in particular. The, December fifteenth nineteen forty-eight, see Felton Little granted to the City of Auburn. It was seven point nine three acres for one dollar. Just wanted to do something for the city. Moving in September fifth nineteen forty-nine, City of Auburn formally opened Felton Little Park. So for those.
What is that?
Seventy-three and a half years. Felton Little Park has been the, you know, been the first formally opened park here in, in Auburn. And it's been, it's been the place for high school football, kids and youth baseball and so forth, picnics, reunions, just places where people could play. So the, the, the stone is sitting there. It's got a tarp on it with a little sign that says, "One day to be unveiled by Ron Anders Jr., Mayor, City of Auburn, and Becky Richardson, Director of Auburn Parks and Recreation Department." That's an unconditional gift to the city. I'm really proud of it, and I really want everybody in the city to be proud of it and feel good about it, because you ought to. There's a lot of work that went in this by a lot of people, yourselves included, a whole lot of citizens. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for sharing your heart with us, we appreciate it, man. Who'll be next? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Martha Shamp, three oh seven Camellia Drive, Auburn. I need some questions answered about who is responsible for purchasing books at the Auburn Public Library. I need to know who is on the library management team by name. I need to know who is on the library, library advisory board by name, and who has okayed the purchase of some of the very questionable books for children in the children's wing of the Auburn Public Library.
We'll get those answers to you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll have to submit a public records request, and we'll be happy to provide the information requested.
Thank you. I, I submit a public records request.
Yes, ma'am.
Where do I get one?
It's on our website, I'll have Mr. David Dorton, he's our Director of Public Affairs. He'll get right with you and tell you where you can find it. He can write down the address, but we can also email one to you if you'd be, if you'd share your email address with him, he'll get that to you.
Yes, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Excuse me, isn't that information already available on the boards and commissions portion?
Absolutely it is, but the, the other information requested in terms of, you know, management teams, things like that, I need that in writing to then, to be sure that we're responsive to the request.
Okay, just want to make sure you are aware that most of that information you asked for is already on the city website under the boards and commissions, the names of the people that you were asking about is already there. Okay. Who'll be next? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sheila Matttut, and I'm at twelve sixteen Norman Road in Auburn. And I'm just here to express my appreciation for the Auburn Public Library, as well as my hope and expectation that our library will continue to provide resources and information for all of our residents, including our LGBTQ ones. And that's, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the back, just one second, sorry, yes. Please.
Hi, I'm Deborah Beal, and I live at eight oh two Toluoma Drive for the last thirty-two years. And I am here as Secretary of PFLAG. I sent each of you a copy of a letter that I wrote to, that we wrote to Mayor Anders, and I would like that letter to be put into public records, so I'm going to read that to you. As you know, PFLAG is an organization made up of LGBTQIA+ individuals, along with parents, friends, and family who work together to move equality forward. We know members of the LGBTQIA+ community have spoken with you in the past about the lack of support they feel in Auburn. It has come to our attention that a complaint has been made against the LGBTQIA material in the collection of the Auburn Public Library. As LGBTQIA+ community members, parents, and loved ones, we appreciate the Auburn Public Library's dedication to serving all in our diverse community. We find belonging and joy in seeing ourselves in the collection's fiction. We seek understanding and connection in the nonfiction. Not only is affirming LGBTQIA representation important for people who already identify as such, but it is also important for the straight and cisgendered members of our community as well. How boring a world it would be if people could only read books and watch movies about themselves. It is also critical to have affirming representation across the board, from board books on up to mature contact. Young children with same-sex parents or transgender siblings deserve to see their families represented just as much as anyone else. Furthermore, the Auburn Public Library does a wonderful job of creating relevant book displays throughout the year. This June, LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, we'd love to see a pride display featuring the affirming LGBTQIA+ books in the library's collection. Having the books in the collection is great, but if they are treated differently because there is a fear of displaying them as proudly as any other book in the collection, then we have still failed in our pursuit of equality. Thank you for your continued support of the Auburn Public Library's policy of inclusion and diversity as they seek to serve the needs of the Auburn community. There is a great need in our community for these books, and we are grateful to the Auburn Public Library for meeting that need. We would love the opportunity to further discuss how the city council could expand its support of the needs of their LGBTQIA+ constituents. Feel free to contact any of us at the phone numbers below, and I will not put those on public record. There's, it's signed by Gabrielle Dunham, President of PFLAG, Deborah Beal, Secretary, Adit Handel, Treasurer. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Who'll be next? This gentleman right here, green shirt, please.
Thank you, my name's Ed Youngblood, seven twenty-nine North Carey Drive, and I would like to thank the previous two speakers for their words of support for the Auburn City Library. They do an exceptional job. I too am troubled about discussions of limiting what's available, and my hope is that that one up. and my hope is that that will not be allowed to happen. Thank you.
Yes, sir. In the back, please.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Walker. I reside at 2078 Autumn Ridge Way. I've been a resident of Auburn since 2004, and have two children who are either in the Auburn school system or have graduated from that system. In the 19 years since I've moved here, I've enjoyed the diversity of our city with representation of people of all cultures and ethnicities. In my own little cul-de-sac, we have families representing all sorts of cultures. We have families from all over the United States, Israel, Pakistan, and Korea. These families also have a range of representation inside of them. We have families with young children, newlyweds, LGBTQ families, African-American families, and retired veterans. This type of diversity in our community demands the same type of representation in our public services, especially our public library. The concern of removing literature from our public library because of a few passages are not contextual to the entire piece of literature, is a very slippery slope. Where do we go from here? Do we begin removing pieces of literature based on themes or passages that do not represent the entire literature as a whole? One that individuals deem disturbing? Do we start looking for themes like mass genocide, torture, slavery, incest, rape, orgies, plague, famines, or murder? Taken on an individual context, those themes sound horrible, but together in a single body of work, that would force us to remove one of the most read religious texts of all times. This single example shows that we must use caution when entertaining the thought of removing any literature available for public consumption. Furthermore, I want to leave you with this. The United States Supreme Court has on many occasions ruled that the public library of a city or municipality is a protected bastion of the First Amendment. Not only should it be protected, but it must be protected from those who would try to censor it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Marsha Boosinger. I reside at 254 Hedgerose Circle in Auburn, Alabama. And at this time, I'm serving as the Chair of the Auburn Public Library Advisory Board. I would like to make the council aware of what has come to the board and to the library in the last several weeks. Some of you may be familiar with some of this and others may not. As I hope everyone on the council has been made aware, in the past two weeks, the Library Advisory Board and the Library Director have received at last count this afternoon, 55 messages from Auburn residents, your constituents, in support of the inclusive and diverse library collection that has been carefully selected and curated by outstanding professionals of the library. Those constituents writing the numerous messages tell stories of how meaningful the library's books and other materials are to them and have been to their families, especially to their children and grandchildren for a very long time. Many of them are voicing their deep concerns about the efforts by an individual or a small number of individuals to remove library materials of any kind, but particularly LGBTQIA+ materials from the library collections, thereby restricting the reading choices of everyone else in the Auburn community. While it is my great hope that the council members have already been copied on all of these messages the library board and library have received and have seen how passionate a significant number of citizens are about not removing materials, much like the previous speakers, I want to read several brief excerpts from some of those messages aloud to remind the council how their constituents feel about this issue. I will not be naming who wrote them for brevity, but they are all available, and I believe-
They have not been shared yet, but I will.
But she has copies, okay. I learned recently that a citizen of Auburn has asked for the removal of materials describing the lived experience of LGBTQ+ individuals, nonfictional and fictional, from our public library's collection. As an LGBTQ citizen of Auburn, a developmental scientist, and a mental health provider, I strongly advocate for our collection to remain intact. Guess I'm only going to get to do one. In my side job, I work with families of queer and trans youth, people right here in Auburn. I can tell you firsthand that the messages of acceptance are helping our youth. I have seen these messages come from supportive friends, trusted adults, and sometimes, I'm not making this up, books. One of my high school clients gives me a weekly update on the LGBTQIA books he is reading. He treasures these stories because they feature people whose lives look like his, people whom he doesn't often get to see walking down the sidewalk or even on his family's TV. He tells me that reading books with queer characters makes him feel seen and helps him to picture his future, a future that he previously couldn't imagine. Some people may believe that removing LGBTQ stories from Auburn's public library collection will result in there being fewer LGBTQ youth in Auburn. Removing representation does not erase people, it only makes their lives harder. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Who'll be next? Please.
Hi, Dr. Wendy Tripp Gordon. I live at 1961 Preserve Drive. I am a professor of adolescent and child development. I do want to say before I start that I am here as a private citizen. I don't represent any department or institution. I am, however, a professor of social emotional development in childhood and adolescence. And while my specific area isn't exactly LGBTQ youth development, my positions, for example, as an editor of the flagship, or associate editor of the flagship journal for the American Psychological Association, means that I read constantly literature and research studies on LGBTQ youth development. And while I can't say anything here that's going to be as meaningful as the quotes that we were just read, I do think it's important to understand that we have had decades of research on LGBTQ development. And what we know is that when kids are in a supportive environment within their schools, within their communities, within their families, they thrive. When communities do not support these kids, when there is bias, when there's discrimination, when they are sent messages that they aren't valued, messages that happen when we say, "You can't be represented in our books. You can't be represented in our library," they hear that. And we know that those youth, when they hear those messages, when they don't get the support, we see huge increases in rates of substance use, depression, anxiety, school failure, self-harm, suicidal ideation, and suicide attempts and completions. No one here wants to see our children suffer. When we start engaging in something like book banning, and we say, "You can't be represented in our community," we protect no one and harm some of the most vulnerable in our community, our children. And I just want to say one other thing. Auburn prides itself, and I agree as a parent, on one of the best public school systems in this country. And I will very proudly say that we have one of the world-leading world-class institutes of higher education. And a community that does that, does not ban books. That's just not what we do, right? We welcome diverse opinions. We allow people to explore ideas, and we do so with the trust that our librarians are professionals who know how to pick age-appropriate material. We welcome the best minds in this country, and that's the best minds of anyone we have, regardless of their sexual or gender identity. We are a welcoming community that values intellectual discourse and intellectual curiosity. I don't think we're going to be here again, because I think pretty much everyone in this room knows that the right thing is to do, which is to continue trusting our librarians to pick wonderful materials for our children and adolescents. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next? Just want to make some final comments before we end tonight. And these represent the council. Obviously, anybody on this council has the opportunity to speak for themselves. You know, part of our responsibility is to appoint the members of our library board. We'll be appointing new members to our library board, at least one new member this spring. There'll be another member of our library board that'll be considered for a second term. That is our responsibility. And what we give to that library board is the responsibility to assist and facilitate and plan and help our library staff run the Auburn Public Library. That's what we do. That is their responsibility. We hand that over to our library board. They have a process to review concerns regarding any materials in the library. Any citizen that has a comment or concern can express that to our library board, and it's their responsibility to take those concerns, take those comments very seriously, and to be responsive to that citizen once they have evaluated what the request can be. Any of us that have concerns about what's going on in the library can go to our library board and express that. In my time of being on the city council and being the mayor, I will tell you that I have been nothing but proud of the work that has been done in our library to facilitate programs for all of Auburn, of all ages and all interest. They have worked hard to be relevant and important to people in our community, and for that, I appreciate it. I also appreciate the fact that I believe that when people express concerns to them, that they do take it seriously. And if there are corrections to be made or improvements to be made, that they will do that, and I have confidence that they will do that. I appreciate everybody that came here and spoke tonight. All of your words are meaningful. We owe some information to the first lady that spoke, and we'll help her collect that information. But I want you to know that the people that we appoint, those five members of that library board, we expect them to work hard, and based on my experiences, they certainly do that, and they're committed. Okay? Is there a move to adjourn?
No move.
We adjourn.